Welcome to the City of Claussen Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 2. This meeting is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, we ask for your direction and guidance today for the healing of our land, protection for military, and direction for our elected leaders. Guide us with wisdom and understanding, grant friendships to all of our neighbors, let us welcome others in need. Thank you for today and all of our days. Amen.
Amen.
Row call, please.
Mayor Loobes?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Horton?
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Here.
Councilmember Woolley?
Here.
The first item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. On the Consent Agenda this evening are minutes from our last council meeting, minutes from two budget workshops, and awarding a bid to Phoenix Cabinets as the lowest bidder for the City Hall Barrier-Free Counters.
Excuse me, Mayor. We'd like to request item 5D be removed. We got word from Mike Pooper today that we did not properly have language in the bid, so we need to rebid it. So we'd like to ask that 5D be removed.
All right, we're removing 5D, so there are three items left on the Consent Agenda: minutes from our last council meeting, and minutes from the two budget workshops.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the Consent Agenda as amended.
Support.
Any questions? Row call, please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor, I do have a question. I didn't get it in before you. Do we have to completely rebid this, or is it just...
We do. We had the language in the bid. Not being familiar with it, we did not have certain items regarding Davis Bacon. There's quite a few requirements that'd be in the bid, and we did not have that in there, so we'll rebid it.
And my question, seeing this on the agenda, this bid was for $10,000. How many bids did we receive?
That was the only bid we got.
And how did we advertise for the bids?
We advertised properly. We put it in the paper, we put it on our bid tab. We just did not get a lot of bidders. We don't know if it was due to the fact that it was a CDBG project, but we found today that there are additional requirements as well to the language in the bid. So we were told today we needed to rebid it.
Okay. So last year I did see a local cabinetry company, which is well-known in our area, measuring for the cabinets.
Yeah, they did. We did not get a bid from them. So we hope when we put everything out, we'll get some more bids on it, because you never like to just get one. The bid price was good, but again, we were told that it would not be sufficient after we already submitted it, so...
Okay, thank you.
If the new bid is an inflated price, will we still have money and funds to complete it?
Yeah, we have... So far, all we've reimbursed is the architectural portion of it, so we still have around $19,000 available.
The next item is recognition to O-Tech students Fox Everett and Matt Dex for designing and welding their bike racks. So I would invite Fox and Matt up to the microphone. Would you show us what you brought with you and talk a little bit about the bike design?
So over the past few weeks, we have been working on bike racks for the parks. This is one of the designs that we did on the plasma cutter today. We got it painted. It's still a little wet.
It's gorgeous.
Thank you. As far as the design process went, it went through a couple of different ideas, trying to figure out which was the best way to do it. I ended up designing everything, like the frames and the actual, like, size of the plates and everything. I ended up designing by hand, because I don't do computer design very well. Overall, I really liked being able to work with more than just like a couple of people on it. We've been able to have pretty much large groups of kids that are also in the class that aren't getting recognized, that have also done work on this, working alongside with me and Dex.
So most of the classes participate in the meetings, but Fox has led the way. So the first of the four is going to be the tree design that you guys requested, painted in a bright green. It's showing here. The second, again, these are works in progress, is the Claussen City Bike Rack Design. And the third is, so this one would be the royal blue, and then in a fall orange color, this one right here. These are a combination of designs the students made, as well as some Google clip art images that were traced.
That's amazing.
Great.
Are you a senior at O-Tech?
Uh, yes.
So will you have time for the remaining school year to complete the project?
Yes, I will.
Oh, how nice.
He's actually already almost completed two of them.
Oh.
And that was mostly this week. We just got the materials here. We have to...
Excellent job.
I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, those are astounding, absolutely astounding. And I think when they're put up in the community, it's just going to add a very distinctive character to this community, which leads me to my question as the city attorney. Are those registered or copyrighted as your designs? So they cannot be copied?
No, but the wording is ours, and they're ours. The pictures are actually stencils that we found. It's an issue. I can buy them. They're $5.
Okay, if you can buy them, that's...
Yeah, you can buy them and provide you with receipts as well.
Well, that's not necessary, but I just, you know, they are going to be our use, and I can see other people copying them, because they're so distinctive, except for the Claussen word, but I think they're great.
Yeah.
Great.
And I would like to invite our Parks and Rec Director, Kathy Leenhoutz, up. We truly are grateful. We've talked about bike racks for a few years, and it took a little bit of momentum to get it moving. And once we inquired, you seemed to jump right on it in the O-Tech School itself, so we really appreciate it. And on behalf of the people in Claussen, we'd like to present you with a certificate to thank you for your hard work and dedication in helping out with the design, welding, and building of the metal bike racks in Claussen. So you have a certificate, and we have one for Matt also.
Come on.
So thank you. Thank you.
And this is Sarah Gamble. She's the instructor of the course, so we thank her very much. She was our initial contact.
That's their best shot.
And the...
You can go in front.
Yeah, Matt is ill tonight, so couldn't be here. But the Parks and Rec Advisory Board also wanted to give each of...
Thank you.
Can I... I'll just give it to him. There you go. If you would get that to Matt, and thank you again for all of your creativity and sharing your talents with us. And for coming tonight. Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
And I do think O-Tech is a great school that Claussen students and other Oakland County students are able to take advantage of. I have one child in the culinary school at O-Tech, and he absolutely enjoys it. People from administrative to the teachers have been marvelous there. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you for this recognition.
Sure. Thank you. The next item is consideration and introduction of the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 14, Animals, Article 1 in General Standing. Animals deemed public nuisances to provide for the control of animals, deeming such offenses to be a nuisance, and providing punishment therefore for a first and subsequent offense, and providing penalties, and particularly identifying the type of conduct of the animal and the requirements of any owner of such an animal. So Mr. Kingsep, is this you talking about the ordinance more, or our prosecutor?
Yeah, this came as a direction from code enforcement. They've been having a number of issues on this. We don't have them in the existing Article 1 of Animals, Section 14, and so we added this. And you'll know that it has increasing punishments for beyond the first offense of civil infraction. And a second one goes up to 500, and then the other one, if it's a recurring event, is a misdemeanor. I don't know if this community has had it, but in Rochester, there are a number of people that now walk dogs. Sometimes there are two, sometimes there are three dogs. And it's an increasing situation. I mean, it's good exercise and everything, but you want to be sure that in that process you have some regulation to monitor the behavior of the animal, and also in other instances. And that's why we've adopted this or presenting this ordinance for your consideration.
So what this ordinance references is loud or frequent barking, yelping, howling, or other noises causing annoyance to the neighborhood, destruction of real or personal property of persons, molesting or injuring any person, or causing unsanitary conditions because of So any person who violates this section for the first time is responsible for a civil infraction and a fine not more than $100. Then you mentioned the second time, the $500 fine.
Right.
Madam Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 14, Animals, Article 1 in general, adding Section 14-1A, Animals Deemed Public Nuisances to Provide for the Control of Animals, Deeming Such Offenses to be a nuisance, and Providing Punishment Therefore for a first and subsequent offense, and Providing Penalties Therefore, and particularly identifying the type of conduct of the animal, and the detailed requirements of any owner of such animal, which will specifically be in offense under this ordinance, be entered into the first reading.
Any other comments or questions?
My only question has to do with the wording "people passing on the streets." I'm trying to imagine the situation there where it says "any animal which shall cause serious or continued annoyance to people passing on the streets." You know, somebody walking by gets barked at, and now the... Does this ordinance... Maybe you can...
Go ahead, go ahead. Pontificate.
Hi, Eric Getz, City Prosecutor from Getz, Newshay. Councilman, in response to your question, I think it deals more with aggressive acting dogs. I don't know if you're a dog owner or not, but I am, and I walk frequently, and you come across some very aggressive dogs, and sometimes they get very close to you and cause anxiety and issues of that nature. So I think we're trying to cover situations where that potentially could happen, not necessarily a dog-on-dog type attack, but some kind of very close contact that someone would, you know, have the reasonable expectation, being very fearful of perhaps having this dog jump on them, or try and bite them, or attack them, or something like that. I think we're trying to have some kind of umbrella language there, if necessary, to kind of take into those kind of situations. But I think the reasoning for the language is...
I worry about over...
I understand the intent, but I guess my question is, if somebody's walking down the street, and somebody's dog's barking at it from the other side of the fence, is that...
Is that a violation?
Possibly a violation.
No, no, no. I don't foresee it in those circumstances, because we're getting into like a different area where you have like property line issues where you have dogs, you know, depending on the time of day, and you have physical barriers between the dog, and they're on their property, and they're barking, and someone going by in the middle of the day. No, I don't think the officers are going to be looking to enforce it in situations like that, because I think, I understand exactly what you say. That doesn't make any sense at all.
But it's what it says here. But I mean, but it also, it also talks about, I mean, I can see if somebody leaves for three hours, and their dog's in the backyard barking, and there's no one at home.
Well, believe it or not, I've handled those matters already with people with dog-related complaints already, so this is kind of where we're headed with this, because the only situation we had right now, or the only remedy we really had because of a lack of any kind of ordinance, was basically tell the, have the officers tell the homeowners they have to call Animal Control. And Oakland County Animal Control is not going to come to Claussen very frequently to deal with barking dog issues. And I was quite frankly surprised at the fairly significant number of these type of cases already. I was kind of surprised by that as a city prosecutor, so I think we're just trying to give the officers, if necessary, the ability to deal with these situations. And you also have to keep in mind, these situations will come to the court, Mr. Newshay and I will deal with them. We're not looking to make dog owners' lives any more difficult than necessary. We are both dog owners, so I think we have kind of a different perspective on the dog-related issues, so I don't think there's a real issue or significant concern for improper application or over-application. I think that's what you're getting to.
Can you enlighten us to this ordinance was created for a reason, so...
Well, it was. Well, the ordinance specifically...
What has transpired?
The ordinance specifically was created because we don't have anything to deal with this at all right now.
I understand.
And the officers were getting frustrated, because they're getting calls from the citizens and everything, anything really to, I don't know, combat the situation with this, combat the situation of the dogs and barking dogs, causing noise and problems after certain hours at night and things like that. All they could do is they call Oakland County Animal Control. That really wasn't working. So that's the basis for trying to craft or trying to draft some sort of tool to give the police officers short of calling Animal Control, which may or may not respond to the situation. That was the thought process behind it.
It is deemed to be a nuisance, and when you look at the declaration, statutory declaration of a nuisance, it is hard to always particularly define an event. That's with real property, and it is also the same with animals. So what we're doing is at least providing a series of circumstances that might eventually become a nuisance. It doesn't mean the first instance is a nuisance. Characteristically, a nuisance is something that is a recurring event, and the officers will probably be instructed in that as well. So it's not, it isn't construed to be, oh, this is the first time it's happened, therefore we're going to issue a citation. I think, again, you have to use common sense. You look at the circumstance, you look at the situation, and then you determine whether or not it's appropriate for any action at all. I think if you clarify it even more, you are then foregoing a situation that could occur that's not mentioned. You're making the ordinance null and void.
Any other questions?
This is a general question about ordinances. Where does language come from for ordinances? Are there other ordinances that we borrow from? I'm sure, I'm sure that's pretty vast.
Oh, absolutely.
And then things that have been, you know, come before the courts and determined to be, you know, okay?
The language, the language for most ordinances is usually drafted from an existing state statute, or an existing ordinance from perhaps another community that we've seen that we think is a good idea. That's typically where the language comes from, as far as when we're creating ordinances. There's typically a state statute on point, however, we want to give the officers a little latitude with perhaps the penalties and punishments, not to charge them with a state violation, offer a local, a local option.
And some are creative. Your property nuisance ordinances generally are creative and are patterned after existing case law, either federal or state, that covers the situation, protects the due process rights of the owner, but also gives power to the city to appropriately act in a given instance.
Yeah, I do, I do think the bill as it's written, or the ordinance as it's written, is a little overzealous or a little unclear as to the final implication of it, but... See, see what happens.
Are there changes you would like to suggest? This is our first reading, so it will come back again.
Sure. Yeah. People passing on the streets is one of the things that bothers me about the way this is worded. And it doesn't talk about whether that person feels threatened, or that an animal feels threatened, or anything. It talks about loud, barking, yelping, or howling. And it's actually talking about noises, and not necessarily any kind of distress or anxiety that's put that the person passing on the street feels necessarily.
Well, would it help you if we were to give you maybe some research on animal ordinances, and the breadth and extent of the vagaries? Oh, you've got your assignment.
He says, thanks a bunch.
Certainly. I'll do some of my own research as well.
Oh, I assure you will.
I read it as well, having a corner lot with two dogs that like to bark at people when they walk by, and I thought, hmm, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
No.
Councilmember Woolley?
No.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
The next ordinance amendment references tobacco use, assault and battery, and menacing. So the language to use would be, "No person under the age of 18 shall purchase, offer, or attempt to purchase, have in his possession, or use any product which is used for the formation of a smoking device, tobacco, tobacco snuff, chewing tobacco, or tobacco in any form. No person shall sell, furnish, give, or deliver any product which is issued for the formation of a smoking device to any person under the age of 18. And a person under the age of 17 who violates this section will be liable for a civil infraction fine of not more than $50." This offenses against persons, assault and battery, reads as "a simple criminal assault is committed when a person attempts to commit a battery or in an unlawful act which places another in unreasonable apprehension of receiving an immediate battery." An individual who assaults...
Can I stop you at that point?
Sure.
Those four ordinances are existing ones, but reworded. So you may want to, as far as an exclamation, just, we can just not vote on separately, but, but explain the fact that the ordinances themselves used to be civil infractions, and as a result, they've, they've, or it used to be misdemeanor, sorry, 46-3, 46-4, and so now they've been altered as civil infractions with a necessary fine of $125. So we minimized the criminal activity and made it the civil infraction.
Are you saying the language is the same?
The language is the same, other than the punishment.
Well, I was reading "to be repealed and replaced with the following," so it's helpful to know what the following is.
Well, it's right there, but, but that is it. And the other, the 46 menacing was changed to delete physically and put "any action and/or battery can be menacing." So it's action. It's not, doesn't have to be physical. It can be verbal, it can be gestures, which are not physical necessarily. The physical could be a threat of harm, immediate harm. So that was altered in that sense.
So the menacing remains as a misdemeanor?
Uh, it does.
Whereas assault and battery?
Right.
Is a civil infraction?
No.
No.
It's a misdemeanor.
Assault and battery still remain as misdemeanor. There were some, if my memory is certainly correctly, we didn't have an actual assault part of the assault and battery ordinance before, which I thought was kind of interesting. Assault is the actual threat to batter someone on a battery is the actual act of striking someone or offensively touching someone without their consent. The statute, excuse me, the ordinance before didn't have the provision regarding, if my memory is certainly right, the assaultive part of the assault and battery. So I think we just added the assaultive language, which is the threat to commit the battery. And it's a misdemeanor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so those are minor edits to those two existing statutes. And let me just go on. The others, which I'll describe by number, and Eric can expand on them, 4642, 4687, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 197, 230, deal with disorderly person, and those are all new. And Eric can get up and explain why those come into play. They're patterned after the felony statutes, but we've made them misdemeanors. So the police department has some latitude and some authority to consider in a given circumstance that the misdemeanor is more appropriate than a felony, where you go through the prosecutor's office, and you go through the circuit court on the charge with a preliminary examination. The fine situation is up to $500 and/or 90 days imprisonment. So Eric can expand more on those and the rationale behind them.
Is, I have one question on that. The 197, that one is new, the illegal use of telecommunications devices?
Right.
Okay. So "no person shall use any electronic telecommunications device with the intent to terrorize, frighten, intimidate, threaten physical harm or damage to property, harass or disturb the peace and quiet of any other person." Well, we're moving into modern times, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
There's a state ordinance that deals with using a computer to commit crimes, and this is kind of an adaptation of a local ordinance, so the officers have the ability, if necessary, to, that offense is actually a felony, to make this a misdemeanor offense that they wish. So they have some latitude of how they wish to charge someone, depending on how the offense occurred. Before, there was really only one option, there was a felony option, and that's not always, under the circumstances, the best option. If that's the only one, is to charge someone with a felony. So it gives the officers another tool to use in the field if they feel that that is not warranted for a felony, but the activity or the action would be more warranted as a misdemeanor. So it gives them another, another tool to use as far as how to deal with situations.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances set forth under Chapter 46. Offenses and miscellaneous Article 1 in general repeal and replace Section 46-3, Use of Tobacco Products on School Property, 46-4, Purchase or Sale of Tobacco Products by Underage Persons. Article 2, Offenses Against Persons, repeal and replace Section 46-41, Assault and Battery, 46-43, Menacing and Adding the Following New Section Provisions Which Pertain to Fines and Punishment Be Entered Into the First Reading.
Support.
Anything else? Row call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
The next item pertaining to massage therapy practitioners, we're going to remove we're going to remove from this due to new information that is still under review and will be brought back to council. Pardon?
Do we need to...
We don't need a motion.
No, no, you don't need a motion on that.
We're moving into public hearings. Establishing public hearings for our budget items. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 to solicit comments on the proposed July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, general operating millage rate.
Questions about that? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
And as with the previous item, it's necessary for the city council to annually establish a millage rate to fund rubbish collection and disposal. So we need another public hearing scheduled to hear comments about the millage rate for rubbish collection.
Madam Mayor, I move a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit comments on the proposed July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, rubbish collection and disposal millage rate.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
The next item references another public hearing in November 2013. Voters approved loving an additional .8 mils for garbage and rubbish collection and disposal services. We need to schedule a public hearing regarding that additional rate.
Madam Mayor, I move a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit comments on the proposed July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, additional garbage and rubbish collection and disposal rate.
Support.
Roll call.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
We also need to schedule a public hearing for consideration of comments regarding the combined city budgets.
Your Honor, I move a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit comments on the proposed July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, combined city budget.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
We have a few more public hearings to schedule. The next one, my personal favorite, references the capital improvement plan.
Madam Mayor, I move a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit comments on the proposed July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, capital improvement plan.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
In February 2012, voters approved loving up to 4.2 additional mils for general operating purposes. We need a public hearing regarding the additional general operating millage.
Madam Mayor, I move a public hearing be established from Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit comments on the millage leveling for both the real and personal property throughout the Claussen Downtown Development Authority District.
Well, one up.
I support the general operating millage is the one we're talking about now. But I support that motion.
Oh, shit. All right, Your Honor, I move a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit comments on the leveling of additional general operating millage.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Still a few more public hearings to schedule. In June 2003, city council at that time approved the loving of two mils on both real and personal property throughout the downtown area. The DDA is recommending the millage be levied again in the upcoming fiscal year, and we need a public hearing to accomplish that.
Madam Mayor, I move a public hearing be established for Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit comments on the millage levying for both the real and personal property throughout the Claussen Downtown Development Authority District.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
And our last public hearing to schedule tonight is regarding the library. With the additional voter-approved operating millage of .3333 approved by voters in May 2011, the maximum authorizing operating millage that can be levied for the library is currently 1.3240. There is a headly rollback of both millages. And the library and the city requires a public hearing regarding the mills.
Your Honor, I move a public hearing to be established for Tuesday, May 16, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit comments on the levying of the Blair Memorial Library Millage.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
So at our next council meeting, we'll have a number of public comments regarding our budget. The next item is consideration of a proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Month. Each year, Oakland County Community Mental Health Authority, along with provider networks, sponsors a variety of activities to bring awareness about mental illness issues to our community. The City of Claussen is partnering with Oakland County in supporting May as Mental Health Month.
Madam Mayor, I move the proclamation recognizing the month of May as Mental Health Month in the City of Claussen be approved.
Support.
Comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Moving towards the end of our agenda, we're looking at the bills to be paid in the next two weeks.
Madam Mayor, I move we pay the bills.
Support.
Questions on the bills? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
City attorneys report?
None, Madam Mayor.
Well, you had the ordinance work that kept you busy. Thank you. City managers report?
Just an update. I had the budget to keep me busy, and I brought out my my whittling knife today and worked quite a bit, both today, yesterday, and over the weekend, to try and reduce the proposed deficit. I do believe that it will be close to half of what we proposed, so we'll be down to about $80,000, which would come from the capital reserve. And with an understanding to department heads that we will work on eliminating the deficit for 18, 19, so that we'll have a balanced budget. But just going line by line, I think I've identified close to half. So I think we'll be closer to $80,000 in the budget proposed to council, and I will send it. And then we do have some ideas, working ideas, for future budget workshops to maybe address more substantive items during the workshops with department heads. They do want the opportunity to respond and cut, especially capital, when council's not comfortable. But if we start with a balanced budget, it would be certainly less discussion on what needs to be cut. But individually, I think this year, again, with a learning process as you go through this, you know, even as many times as I've done it, what's comfortable for council. And I think a balanced budget to start is certainly a lot more comfortable than a deficit, so... That's all I have.
Thank you. We do like a balanced budget. Any other business? Onto new business. Tomorrow night at Hunter Community Center, youth assistants will recognize students in our community for good deeds with our youth recognition award at 7:00 PM with refreshments, speakers, dignitaries. So if you're free, stop by Hunter and see what we're doing. On Sunday, May 7, is the Crop Walk. It's a Walk for Hunger, which is a collaboration of churches in Claussen and Troy and other surrounding areas where teams or individuals have gathered pledges. Part of their money will support the Claussen Food Pantry, will support the Troy Assistance Fund, and part of the money will be sent overseas to support hunger in our world. May 8, I would invite you from noon to 9:00 PM to participate in a Dine for Dollar fundraiser for an Eagle Scout at Montage Grill. So 10% of your check receipt will be donated to the Eagle Project. Claussen Pause is coming up on May 20 at Claussen City Park. It's a two-mile walk for homeless animals. The walk starts at 11:00 AM. The public is welcome after the walk for pet adoptions, vendors, games, prizes. And the event lasts until 3:00 PM. One event we've been waiting for for some months is our Farmer's Market. Will begin again May 21 at the park, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Many new vendors, many activities planned throughout the market season, which will go weekly. One of the, we just had contact with Bowl One, who will bring two portable bowling alleys that will be free also as an activity, along with some new vendors, our regular vendors, food and music. Memorial Day is coming up on the 29th, and historically, we have speeches at the gazebo at the library. It's sponsored by the American Legion. So our come and honor and support our military and our veterans and honor those who have died for us serving our country.
What time is that?
10:00 AM. Anything else?
Mayor, I did want to add, I had a good meeting today with Mr. Mancor. He came before council, I think, a couple of years ago. They're working on a veteran memorial that will be hung here in the community center on the north wall. They're asking, in fact, I'll have Mike work on that tomorrow, but they're asking for anyone connected to Claussen who has a veteran in their family who've passed away. They want to honor all of those veterans. Doesn't matter what branch of service, whether they, you know, served in a combat or not. They want people who've been involved and connected to Claussen to submit information. I have that information, I'll have Mike put it on the website as well to contact Mr. Mancor, Mr. Sommers. So a lot of veterans out there, and I think through contact and social media will probably fill the plaques. I think they had room for 240, I want to say, names, and they already have 72, and they believe they're making contacts that'll fill the rest. But it's expandable as well. So it is something they'd originally planned to put outside, but I think the consensus is not having proper space and then maintenance of it would be better inside. So they put a lot of work into this. I think he'd mentioned three years he's been working on it, so... And then Tim Burns as well, worked on the Vietnam Veterans Wall, and he had some good ideas. So I think through outreach in Claussen, that's going to be something that'll be terrific and something we can probably put an intern to work on to help out as well. They're looking for somebody a little bit younger. I think in the room, I'll call them seasoned, I won't call them old, individuals who've put a lot of work into honoring veterans, and I think it's terrific. I have, you know, father and brother that are veterans as well, and I think it's great to see people want to honor their memories.
Thank you.
Did you happen to mention the deadline when he would need the names for them to be included?
No deadline. They can add, they'll have blank the little place holders that they'll have, that can be engraved, will be blank, and they can update them at any time. So there's no real deadline. The initial, I guess unveiling should be within the next couple of months. But they can add, they can add at any time, so there's no real timeframe. But the sooner the better to get on the official.
Be something Gina could put in the Claussen Highlights?
Sure.
Since it's due.
I think Facebook page, the website, and the highlights, I think it's reaching out and through social media especially, to find people out there that have a connection to Claussen. I mean, it turned out, interestingly enough, Mr. Mancor's was a brother-in-law of someone who taught and coached with my dad at Madison High School. The outreach is amazing in this area. So many people, and we could have been in there another hour. They were reminiscing on Claussen itself. But very interesting, you know, I could sit around and listen to stories like that for hours. Right now, they're working hard on getting veterans recognized, so I think it's a great effort, and I commend them for it.
Thank you. It will be a marvelous project. And I agree with you, the stories of early Claussen are fascinating. And from them, I learned that the street we reference as Pare, P-A-R-E, they reference as Paree. And the stories of the, what were vacant areas at the time and how they filled their time as children.
And so many streets and buildings even named after settlers in Claussen from so many years ago. Definitely a family, community connections all the way through.
Yep. All right, the floor is open for public discussion. Okay, the floor is closed for public discussion.
Madam Mayor, before we close, would you indulge me? I would like to say happy anniversary to my wife. It's been 30 blessed years, so...
Happy anniversary.
I'm sitting here, she's at home wondering why I'm sitting here. We had a nice lunch. But thanks, honey, I love you.
That was very nice.
Congratulations.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Honey, I'm coming.